Hello.
How's it going?
Got a lot of stuff here.
I was confused.
Yeah.
Oh, he's crazy, you know.
A lot of, a lot of things.
Yeah.
Some more than I know.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Brad's not gonna be able to come today.
Oh, he's not?
No, some- something happened with his schedule, whatever.
Well, we don't need him really, because of that.
Yeah, so he asked it.
He just likes to come on, but we already went over those proposals, like, yeah, it's just his recommendations.
Exactly.
I swallowed coffee funny.
Yeah.
I know.
Is this job description for solid waste the same one we've gotten our?
Yes, I didn't realize you guys had it, Julie gave me two copies, so just. You just needed a journal entry.
Yeah, because I thought we said that we didn't really wanna look at job descriptions anymore, I mean, unless there's something very important to point out to us.
Yes.
Yeah.
Let's do it. Eight fifty-nine.
Ready for fair?
I'm gonna be out of town.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
You don't have to ride in my wagon.
I'm ready.
Yeah, I bet.
I wanna go out of town too.
Is Bill ready, that's what I wanna know.
I know, right?
Yeah, he's done this.
He's there all day.
I know. He always gives that neat stuff, what are you giving out this year?
Uh, it's actually super cool, it's got, um, lip balm on one side and sunscreen on the other side.
Oh, that is, that is cool.
I think we need to try it out.
I should, I'll remember.
You should, yeah.
I will remember.
Bring gifts, that's what I do.
I want to have nice, moochy lips.
I love that vanilla chapstick.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If we recess to solid waste, we will have a motion to approve a consent agenda.
Yes, I think you're, the consent agenda. I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
And I will second roll calling, Sabrina?
Yes, yes. Okay, discussion.
And then our job description, I guess, we'll just, we're gonna okay the job description.
Is there anything that to point out, 'cause, yeah?
No, it's just specify that it's a second shift position, you know, um, dumping garbage, I think.
Okay. And is that one still there?
Yes.
It's, okay. Okay, looks good to me, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
You have the, uh, general entry?
Journal entry, for the job description. I thought you said there was a journal entry. Okay.
For solid waste.
For the job description. And why you have that journal entry?
It was with the second copy. Is that new?
Oh, this is it, okay. Okay, so I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the job description for the CDL truck driver for second shift for porch cutting solid waste management district.
And I will second, roll calling, Sabrina?
Yes, yes.
A motion to adjourn solid waste.
Perfect.
Sure, we'll make a.
I will swing right.
Motion to adjourn solid waste.
And I will second, roll calling, Sabrina?
Yes.
Yes.
Will we convey to the board of commissioners? So Brad's not going to be here, um, I think we could probably go ahead and.
This, well, this is an add-on for the resolution. So, I'll just go ahead and make a motion to approve, to add a resolution to award and enter into an agreement with Point and Pay LLC to accept payments by financial transaction devices for expenses owed to the county.
And I will second, roll calling, Sabrina?
Yes.
Vicky?
Yes.
What was the name of the company?
It is Point and Pay LLC.
Boy, it was.
Why would we say? Well, you know what, we got plenty to sign.
Yeah, I see that.
I see that. So, we wanna recess?
We'll recess till water.
Oh, well.
Oh, is Water Resources here?
John is.
I didn't know you were coming, come on in.
Well.
Hi, John.
I don't think I'm the one that's supposed to be presenting, I think Laura's coming.
Okay.
Oh, is she, okay.
Oh, yeah, no, it's, you guys aren't in until nine thirty, so come on in.
Yeah.
You're, you're early.
I didn't keep planning on being here early, so she might be here any minute.
Yeah, when she comes in, we'll, we'll get started.
Sounds good.
Come on in and have a seat.
Oh, you didn't, sorry.
Right, okay.
Good.
Hey, I'm gonna recess then, okay?
Sure.
Vacant up here, I guess somebody moved.
Yeah, we moved down, down into the ware, like, we call it the warehouse district, down where we were a long, long time ago. Yeah, you'll have to come visit us, we're behind the elevators.
Amy, do we put today's date on this request date for these, if they forgot to put the date up there?
Yeah, is that Todd?
Yeah. Put today's date?
Yeah. Is Todd here?
Um.
Yes, I'm pretty sure that email came this morning, right?
Yes.
Yeah. How's things on, probably?
Busy.
Are you, yeah, I bet.
As usual.
How's, I hear the road's pretty nice, huh?
Yes, yeah, dramatic improvement. Now you wanna speed. It's nice and level and flat.
Flat and, yeah.
It feels like a racing car.
Yeah, that, Glenn was saying that it really, they did, he thought they did like a really good job, this company, the thing, and I don't remember who the engineer had.
It's thicker, even.
Yeah.
It's not chimney over, like, it's thicker, where it was leveled up, nice and level.
Yeah. Well, it was needed, that's for sure.
Yeah, it's been a few years.
You know, are all the, so I just ate all of Todd's today, is that what we do?
Isn't there a date tied down below our signature line, is there a line there for date, Vicky?
Total hour's twenty-five.
No.
No. Will we approve it and?
Okay.
Some of them do, it's really weird.
We're having, we're having all of that app comp done, yeah.
They're all wood.
And then all back, after, well, I don't even remember how many years it's been, and they just, you know, started to decide, right, so then when we had to do the roofing project, we included it all in there so that we could get them all done and brought up to snuff, so to speak, yeah.
Is Jean coming in, John?
I believe just Laura.
Okay, I've, I've got this note hole for Jean.
It's on their agenda, I just wanted to make sure you didn't forget about it.
Jean's coming, because he's gotta go to Manway Village.
Well, that's what I thought.
Yeah.
Yeah, he should be there.
That was a reminder from last week.
Okay.
Remind us to talk about it.
John, Deb Horn, is that a new employee of Water Resources or, I just don't know?
Not real new, new work.
Okay.
But, coming off probation.
Amy, do I sign these minutes before our meeting this afternoon, for the records? Does it matter?
Add them if it matters, I can hold them to make sure. I mean, I read on my.
I know there's a correction that needs to be made.
There is?
Yeah, I had sent to Amy about, um, said that Steven was, says that he was unpaid administratively, but it's unpaid administratively.
Oh, yeah, I think I corrected that.
And I don't know if you had it fixed in that, that what I, the copy that I got for today's meeting didn't have it in there.
Oh, it didn't?
No. But if that has unpaid, then you're fine.
I think she did have it unpaid, 'cause that was out at the record center, right?
I think I changed it, but I may have printed.
Yeah, yeah.
That's important.
Oh, yeah. Oh, you know what, it's paid here. This need to be changed, yeah. With the third employee unpaid administratively.
Yeah.
Thanks, John, I can either unpaid in my.
I have a second copy that says.
Well, see, I think mine says unpaid, because I knew it was unpaid.
And let me just print it again. Thank you.
Yeah, that's okay.
Oh, you know what, she had it paid on mine too, I thought I wrote it unpaid, 'cause I knew it wasn't paid.
Do you have a question, Jean?
Yes, Mike.
Oh, hi, I'm Amy. I'm great. Who are you? This is Mike Thomas, the county engineer.
Yeah, I know.
I'm on it, Dan. See if you guys had any questions.
Okay. Mike, did you go out and take a look at that, by the post office?
Yes, I did. And, uh, John talked to you yesterday, I think?
Yeah.
Yes, but, yeah.
Yeah.
This is, it should be good.
We were just talking about how nice Infirmary Road is.
Yes, it turned out really nice, yeah, they're gonna burn Monday and Tuesday.
That's what everybody says, I haven't had to go out there yet, but it should be next week.
Really, really did turn out nice, we had good weather, too.
Who was, who was your contractor again?
Oh, Ron Yack did that one.
Ron Yack, okay.
And boy, they didn't waste any time, I mean, once they started, they had one site, the entire one site done, and then they were out there on weekends.
Yeah, they were, they were hauling out of Shilohville, that makes a huge difference.
Uh, yeah.
I mean, they were, you know. So it made, uh, made it quick.
Oh, come on in.
Hey, Laura.
Hi, Laura.
Oh, there's Jean.
You guys love it.
Where I'm square, too.
We love her.
Who's blocking space?
So first item, we had a discussion item, review the general plan, prepared by CT consultants, which in a lot of the projects.
Yes.
From CT consultants, and I didn't know what we guys had.
Didn't we sign something for that last week?
We signed, I think we signed for the findings and orders, which we'd already sent over to the EPA uh, last week, Thursday, so they have that out.
Okay.
No, 'cause I met with you and you went over. Do you have any engineering questions, so John, that's your engineering.
Oh, yeah, we have engineering questions, so, John, sure.
He's been involved with the project.
We're working on it.
That's another language.
Oh, I have one question, it was brought to our attention that you might have been interested in putting one of those lift stations or pump stations over at the old motor pool, is that still on the radar, Jean, or?
It's an idea, uh, it's a concept, and I know there were some things, I think, other things going along with that, uh.
You know, we, I reported back to the board and gave them the information that you guys wanted to know, if you could use a section of it, and they were going to get some feedback from Jean, I think is where you left it, you wanted some feedback from him to know a little bit more about that project.
Okay.
Yeah.
It, it's, it's an idea on several options that we're still reviewing on the preliminary, uh, layout and design of it. We're not dead set on, boy, that's ideal, we'd like to have it, but it's, it's one of the, one of the ideas.
Okay. We have a couple of different options for that section, we're still, we're gonna be meeting internally to finalize that.
Do you have any comments on that, Jean?
I defer to these folks, they haven't gone to the meetings, the, the nice thing about it is we already own it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That saves the customers money long-term, but
Sure.
it has to physically fit into the footprint, the gravity sewers, and I think that was the ideal low spot, so it's right next to the creek.
'Cause there, there was also a talk about, um, updating short streets pump station to help with it, and then, um, traditional pump station, then you have West Park, I'm just looking at my notes when I met with Laura. Okay, that's it. Yeah, and those are the items that we're still gonna have to be discussing.
Yeah, we're still working through the preliminary.
Are you, okay.
Challenges anyways, and what the best fit is.
And then Laura had mentioned that, um, that when it ends up, the one station ends up in Franklin Hills, or there's a valve that can switch it to go to Ramona, is that? There's a couple of those in the system. A couple of them, okay.
I think the plan is anyways to send this flow to the Ramona wastewater plant all the way.
Yeah. Makes sense, 'cause it seems like there'd be more issues the further away that you send it, so. We have some issues in that section that goes to Franklin Hills. Okay. All right. So, do you need anything from us today, other than your?
The files, just great to see if we had any other questions.
Because if this is acceptable, then I think the EPA was looking to have that finalized, general plan sent as part of one of the orders, so.
One of our steps anyways, I'd have your guys' input.
Yep.
Sounds good to us.
And then this discussion item here, um, I guess, you know, I think I understand this, this is about the late charges that you're asking us to take, but I guess.
And is that her?
It was another, yeah, it was another invoice that was lost, is that correct?
Yeah, that's two separate things.
These copies, we just have the, the late charges on them. And the auditor just paid the invoice amount and not the late charges, and then she's needing us to okay the late charges.
That was what we, um, were, and that's what she indicated to us.
Have we changed the procedure where this doesn't happen again?
We are. Well, the procedure, the procedure we have now is that the invoices come in, and we have different sites throughout the county, so those get sent out to supervisors at those sites to allow review it, and normally the turnaround time is very quick, but some of these, and in this month in particular, there were a few series of events that occurred, and one of the invoices got misplaced in the office, that did occur, but the other two invoices that we got back, there was, I know, um, one of our employees had a sick day, there was the holiday, and then we had office closure days for the snow, that cold weather that we had. So that impacted this January bill in particular, and that is where this all stemmed from, it was one month. So right now, our, um, we're looking at having them all go to the business manager, we're not gonna funnel them to the supervisors, we're gonna scan them, supervisors are gonna be able to take a look at them, and if they are in agreement with that invoice, then they'll be able to do a sign-off without actually having it.
So right now, it goes to the supervisors, and the supervisors give them to the person that pays them, is that correct?
Correct.
And so we're not gonna send them directly to the person that pays them, and when does the supervisor look at them, to okay them, or whatever?
It, it, it can be a couple of days, if they're good about it, it can be, this is the same.
Not in the new, in the new way of doing things.
Oh, in the new way of doing things.
When does the supervisor?
We're gonna ask them when they, when she emails them out to them that they have, and she's form, formulating that timeframe.
Okay.
Because we just have to make sure that we're giving enough time when we sign off on it, and when we enter it into munis, and then when it's signed off on, that we give enough time, time for that check to get cleared, because that process can take time as well, and so we don't wanna run into this situation in Streetsboro.
Yeah. Well, it appears that you're gonna be asking us to approve the six seventeen thirty-nine, because it's due today, and there's no way that we're gonna be able to pay it today, is that correct?
That's correct, well, that was, that was by this date, um, and then the next cycle bill goes through in September, I believe. Was, it was, when it's gonna increase again, I believe it was September fifteenth, is only, quarterly.
Well, this is saying it's not paid by August eighth, though, they're gonna end it on six thirteen, so it's gonna be six seventeen thirty-nine.
Yeah. It's gonna be six seventeen thirty-nine.
Now, when will that be paid, we're just not gonna, we're not gonna wait till September fifteenth, are we?
No, we can probably, we can pay on it now, because that's what the invoicing says now, to avoid it, and we can contact Streetsboro as well in this, to finalize that.
Okay.
But we don't need a special journal entry or anything, do we, Todd, for that? Because it should be in our bill page, 'cause it's my understanding you sent for the entire bill to be paid, and the auditor's office only paid the current bill.
She can't do that, though, evidently, because of that letter.
So, so, in my mind, we don't have to do a special journal entry for it, I thought it would just be included in our.
I think we do, 'cause we have to approve it, don't we, Todd, I mean?
So, the commissioners have to approve every expense, always, which is what your bill approval process is. To have to pre-approve bills and then also approve them later is not a requirement.
Okay.
It is a request currently before you.
Okay.
Um, I would advocate that you not get in the habit of pre-approving invoices, because that adds steps and time, which will only exacerbate the situation, not solve it. Um, I will tell you that late fees in January are more the norm than the exception, because we shut down in December.
Yeah.
And we'll get an invoice, if any invoices due the end of December, it's late.
Okay.
The county does not issue checks, it does not issue new PTOs, um, and so we get late fees. So, even with the situations that happen, it's very common for us to get late fees on January bills, well, actually, that's the December bills. So, what's before you right now is a request for you to separately approve that these late fees be paid.
But we already approved it, and the bill paid for.
Well, you haven't approved these yet, but you will when they come.
But I thought they sent in the amount for the full bill, it was like over a thousand dollars, she paid the amount that was due.
What was sent to you was the, only the amount of the current, so you have not approved yet the.
The late fees.
But they also have not been brought before you yet.
Okay.
So, what should happen is Kevin should enter these into munis next week, we will get the bill run that includes these.
Okay.
Then we approve them.
And you will approve them as you always do.
Yeah, like we already do.
Okay.
Okay.
There is appropriation for these expenses, and they are under a certified purchase order, which are the two requirements for it to go through the system as normal. So there isn't anything out of the ordinary with this that would require a separate journal, but.
She's bringing it to our attention, because probably the amount.
It has suggested that they want one, your question is whether you agree as to that or not.
Well, didn't, but let me ask a question, didn't they, didn't Kevin put the full amount in?
Yes. He did.
And then when it landed at the auditor's office, they took off the late fees and paid just what was due, isn't that what, what happened? Now, they normally do that, no.
And then one they go through.
One did go through.
They didn't, that's what I thought, it was like a sixty-seven dollar one, they'd actually go through.
That's.
So that's why there's two that are remaining.
Oh, you know, okay, okay, so it's not the one that's here, though, that's, wow, okay.
So, so he did put it through for their full amount, she only.
Oh, I didn't know that.
She only paid the amount that was due, and.
Right, she, they changed it there.
So there was an exception made to this.
Was the fault of these guys, they tried to get the whole thing paid.
Yeah.
And it would have been on your bills allowed the full amount at the time, had the auditor's office not taken off the late fees.
The, the auditor had questions regarding late fees in particular, and she sent away for the prosecutor's opinion, which I believe is why it was removed pending that.
I think so, too.
Um, again, I, I'm of the impression that there is nothing to keep this invoice from proceeding through the normal system.
Okay.
Um.
She just had a question.
I just don't want any more late fees on there, Todd, that's, you know.
Well, it's quarterly.
Yeah, the, the irony is, is though, is that Streetsboro charging itself.
I know.
They can give us a million dollars in late fees, we're just gonna charge Streetsboro a million dollars.
See, that doesn't make a lot of sense.
It's, it's six to one, half a dozen the others, so, which we tried to explain to them, you're charging yourself, anyway.
But they're saying that's the Ohio revised code, right?
Well, they have the authority to add it, and they, in their own policies, do not have exceptions, which is what they're saying their issue is.
Is, okay.
They have no mechanism within their policies to waive fees.
It's their policy that's preventing them, okay.
And that's understandable, we ourselves often are hesitant to waive fees that are outside of our own policies.
Okay. I understand.
Um, the key is whether we pay five hundred, six hundred, or eight hundred, it's, it's Streetsboro's money.
Well, I guess, you know, you're talking about late charges in January, because of the December shutdown. Are we gonna be handling all late charges like this now, I mean?
That's why I would advocate you not pass a separate journal like that now, I do not think that you want to invite that as added steps to the process.
Yeah. No.
That'll just add more work, more paid work.
Well, I would throw in also that before the auditor changed their procedures downstairs, departments were able to submit invoices twice a week to be paid. Well, then it got switched to one, and I'm pretty sure, you know, if research was to be done by some. You know, if research was to be done by someone, that you would see that that compounds the problem then with the late fees, because it, they're only going out once, you know, once a week.
Okay.
So my, my advice will be, you know, Kevin, recently, these invoices, don't do a journal entry.
Okay.
If the auditor brings it up for a question again, I think it's reasonable to have Kevin, Jean, whoever else meet with them, and outline these very things that it will be approved by the commissioners, but as always, yes.
Okay, that makes sense, thanks, Todd, I appreciate it. Okay, so I will make a motion to pull journal entry sixteen.
And I was second?
Oh, we don't have to second.
We wouldn't need a second for that, do we?
Yeah. Journal entry sixteen, which is under order resources.
Excuse me, thanks.
You're out of here, huh, John?
John, it's out of here.
Sounds good, John.
Good to see you, John.
Take care of that one, Ian, for a second now, um, she'll, the auditor will know that that's to be, that it's accepted to pay that full amount.
Yeah, we're gonna send, we'll send her a letter.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, she, I mean, again, it should just be submitted as normal.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, she just wanted to make sure that
Yeah, and, and that's a good point, the auditor brings it out, cause, and it's probably because of such the large amount, but, but with the way the process is, she gets the bills.
Yeah.
And all you do is get like a, a itemized list of the bills, you don't get the breakdown of
Ideally, what should've happened with this is it should've come up on the bill run with perhaps a note, and are you aware there's a five hundred dollar late fee on the Streetsboro? I mean, that would, that would be an acceptable method to bring it to your attention. The idea that the commissioners are gonna have to review individual invoices on a regular basis for late fees is, is a burden I don't think you wanna take on.
No, we don't.
Now, we skipped over the joint, uh, policy.
You know what I thought, yeah, I thought we, yeah. All right, is a letter going or no? Pardon me, is there gonna be a letter going or no?
Yes, yeah, we have a letter.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, Todd, on this, uh, joint operational policy for shared facilities, uh, they're saying either lump sum or incremental payments, does it matter, I mean?
We can do a lump sum.
Do a lump sum?
Okay.
Okay, so, so for this, um, we have interconnections with the city of Ravenna, and it's for wastewater, and I had to really look into this as well, because I wasn't too familiar at the start of this, when this all started occurring, that we were noticing this meter, which is the this is the RASH meter pit.
Um, was it the, yeah, Scranton.
Scranton RASH. We started noticing that the flow was jumping, I think, believe in October of last year, and we monitor them, but up until that point, we, we look at the meter reads, and we make sure that they're in the same range, but then they started jumping, and that's when we started talking to Ravenna to try to figure out what was going on with that meter. So what was happening was is we were deducting more than we should have from our bill, that, the flow that we sent to them, so we were deducting more flow, and I think that's what the gist of it is, and that's how this came to be, so we actually halted billing, and talking with Ravenna.
Yeah, for a couple of months.
For a couple, for four months, until we figured this out, we thought we had gotten it fixed in January, we brought some Dave Power and Associates out, and they looked at that installation, and we thought we had recalibrated it correctly, and fixed a few items, but then, um, February, those numbers started jumping again, and so, in Ja, between January and February, so we halted billing in February. And the new meter was put online sometime in May, and we were able to get reads, and the reads that we obtained from this new meter fit in with the estimate that we, when we worked with Ravenna, we met with them a couple of times, Mike over there, to determine what the flow was, that we would back generate, and then the meter reads in June confirmed the estimate that we had came up with for where we should've been all along in those months, and so we, we agreed with them to go back to two thousand sixteen, was when, you know, we looked at all the flow data going back, I think all the way back to two thousand four even, and we determined that two thousand sixteen was an agreeable date to, to go back to.
Okay.
So hopefully, if, if you guys are on board with that, uh, joint operational agreement with, um, Ravenna, they've looked over it already, we've had the label review it as well, we'd like to
You must have heard of Ravenna.
Yeah, be on board with them, Kate was asking about it, so.
Yeah. I think it's a good idea.
Yes.
And then get caught up with what, what we owe them, and then going forward, just monitor it.
I mean, I just leave you guys some background in there, too, so you
Yeah, I always appreciate that, yeah, that's good. Okay, good checks and balances, so hopefully we don't have this again. Okay.
Ah, the fun one.
Uh, Jean's on.
All right, there's a couple things that you might sign, one is the, the extension through August thirtieth.
Okay.
The village, and then, of course, we're here to talk about another extension.
Yeah.
We've done some pretty deep soul searching, can we do it, yes, can we sustain it, probably not very easy. The analysis that's been done with our operation folks provide for some concerns, in that, uh, currently we have, uh, two class one operators, two class two operators, three class three operators. Understanding that a class three can operate anything that we have, and a class two can only operate class two and one, we start to become somewhat limited in terms of what we can attempt to do. When we throw Manaway in the mix, we go upside down using sixteen percent time off, all right, that's gonna be stated, uh, which is a separate analysis, we do relative to vacation, sick leave, all those pieces. But if we take nine employees for forty hours a week, that's three hundred and sixty hours, you take sixteen percent of that for out of, uh, non-working time, that's fifty-seven point six, so we end up with a pool roughly, well, not roughly, three hundred and two point four hours per week for nine operators. The downside to that is we're using our mechanic instead of doing preventative maintenance, he's operating plants. Our chief operator, instead of overseeing process control, is also operating plants, so we're not as efficient as we wanna be. That creates a void of fifty-four point six hours. Now, it has to be clarified, because on any given day, nobody, or week, nobody can be off, so we can cover everything, no problem. The flip side is we could have three people off sick, in which case we're in real deep problems. My recommendation is, uh, threefold, one, if we extend past July, I'm sorry, September first, that we, at minimum, have to increase our rates to Manaway based on our collective borrowing agreement increase that is due September one. We did the same thing last year, we started in July, amended for July, our September one increases, and we're right back at that. Number two, we increase, um, to cover our overtime cost, and when I say that, it's not only overtime in Manaway, but it's overtime looking anyplace else, so if we're working normal straight hours in Manaway and have to go and spend two hours in Randolph to finish our required time in plant, that they would be billed that time. And we'll be honest and transparent about it, but it's not that we're asking for them to pay overtime, because we have an emergency in a plant, it's just the coverage, so, that would be crafted and included in any agreement. And the third piece is, I'm sure you were, when Manaway requested proposals, there was a firm who applied, uh, to operate only. That was their proposal, they didn't wanna own, just operate. The owner of that company has since, uh, communicated with me, and is willing at some price, we've yet, I, he's sending me a proposal, he could operate the plant in our stay, which may make both sides favorable, we just have to see what their price is gonna be. They were over twice what we were, uh, to begin with, but then equally, uh, I think he's looking at us long-range, you know, we have an extended illness, can he backfill that illness, those kinds of things, so uh, we'll have to report back on that. I hate to keep pushing the can down the road, but I wouldn't do much more than one month unless we get something in writing from this company.
Jean, am I wrong in thinking that eventually we're gonna have to merge, I mean, the county's gonna have to take over, is that, is that just an assumption that's really not true, or, I mean?
The EPA is
Well, if they, if they fail, uh, the EPA's reported to me that elsewhere in the state of Ohio, they have ordered the county commissioners to take over, uh, whatever facility, whether it was private or public. So it, the, the onus is here, it's us. Sooner or later, whether it's a year from now or five years from now, if they fail, I'm not saying they will, but if they fail, it'll come back here. I'm the strong believer in controlled dissent, you know, instead of being faced with this massive problem, if it's worse, let's recognize it and
That's where it becomes confusing to me, if we think that's gonna happen, why don't we just do it, I mean, what, there's a piece I think I'm missing here.
And what, what I think the piece is, and, and the mayor said it very eloquently, um, they don't want Manaway to become a ghost town. And if the rates go up so high
Well, no, I don't, I know it's true. So that's inevitable, the rates have to go up so high.
And the question is how much, and we don't have those answers, so their last proposal, they sent to us on August first, included, uh, present value shortfall, so what is our, bringing all the money back today, and knowing that we're in need of X amount of dollars, the shortfall was two point four million, in their analysis. I'm not saying they did it intentionally, it's just my review of their analysis, looking at over the total years available to pay this back, we're, we're being short of two point four million based on identified needs, are the needs right? What's the cost gonna be, we don't know until we start the process. Uh, their first surcharge, that it wouldn't start until twenty twenty-three, which was kinda odd to me, I was just like, let's get started if we're gonna do it. Pushing the can down the road another three years just means we have ownership, and we've not been able to collect the money necessary to even start the process of designing some of these improvements. Their last surcharge was twenty fifty-eight, so they went from thirty-two fifty-three, and for the period twenty twenty-nine to twenty forty-two, their surcharge was a hundred and fourteen dollars. Now, that's out several years from now, nine years from now, ten years from now, but I look at this and I'm going, ten years from now, somebody sitting here is gonna be entertaining people sitting behind, why is the price going up so high? And you can hold the document out, this is what was recommended, but it doesn't matter at that point, it's us increasing the rate. Uh, their average surcharge, when you look at the, uh, total number of years from twenty-three to fifty-eight, was eighty-six dollars and seventy-nine cents. Just take the average across the board, it's a weighted average. Um, you look at that, and we apply that same average starting in twenty twenty, and we carry it through to twenty fifty-nine. We end up a constant supply of money, eighty-six seventy-nine per customer per month, and that reduces the present value shortfall to just under a million dollars, so we've already gained a half a million, one and a half million. What we propose doing, uh, my risk factor for the shortfall, I don't think it'll be on us, I think that there are things that are need to be studied before we execute if we were to do this plan as currently before, Manaway to be considered. We would do it January one, twenty twenty, and if that's the case, then they're gonna go at eighty-nine, um, per month. And then at the end of five years, this is part of the proposal that I've entertained with them, we reset, because by the end of five years, we're gonna know what the costs are, cause the designs are done. The grant money will be provided for, and now we can start to reduce this cost down. So instead of putting the pain back later in the process, let's just start right in the front end. And it's their number, ultimately, it's their average number, and the simple fact of the matter is, if all that is needed, they're not peaking out at, uh, twenty-five, twenty-six dollars more a month, we're keeping it steady.
Do we know where they're at with the grant process, cause I thought when they were in there, they were pushing towards a deadline, but they didn't have their LMI study done that they needed for that?
Correct.
So, I mean, and, and the benefit is, is if they get the grant, it's a half a percent less than if the county?
Well, and the other question is being discussed, I think, at the state level right now, given the fact that we're not the only people discussing this kind of issue, small
Yeah.
utilities that have operated, uh, with less than the funding necessary for a long time period, the EPA is literally looking, if it's a disadvantaged community, whether the county applies, and we absorb them, or the disadvantaged community applies, can they still take advantage of that? We don't have an answer to that, that's another wonderful question.
I thought that they had wanted to use some of the planning hours.
Yeah, we, we had discussed the planning hours, but we were gonna wait.
It's not gonna happen this year.
Until
Yeah, cause it's not, that, that they have to be submitted, submitted in August.
But with the LMI study not being done, it's not, it's not gonna happen.
They, and they, and they wouldn't have the time.
Yeah.
But I thought they wanted the LMI, uh, they wanted the hours for the LMI, I thought they were gonna have
That's what they needed it for.
So they, but it's not
So they can still use it this year?
They can still start their LMI this year, and then there are, there are different funding agencies that have different application deadlines, too, some of them go in March.
Well, I have no problem with them using our hours, because as we said before, we're not gonna use them, I just don't want them to go to waste, I don't wanna say that they are and
We're not gonna use them this year. A lot of times our hours do go to waste, because
I don't, I don't know if they proposed any type of an LMI, would they have CT run that for them?
No, that would be done by, for each kind of regional plan, that's what we're talking about, the county hours.
Yeah, yeah.
If they, if they wanna move forward with it, I think
Well, I saw in, in the mayor's letters, if they were gonna do the LMI study whether or not, you know, they meant the grant timeline, they, they were still gonna proceed with that.
Absolutely.
I would think we would want that, I mean, even if we merge and they haven't done it yet, we will complete the LMI.
Yeah, oh, it has to be done, right?
Right, I mean, that, and that's where it comes down to, it's, from what we're hearing from the state, even if we merge, we will still gain the benefits of that area, um, if it has that benefit. We can't be guaranteed that, it has to be on a case-by-case basis as it comes forward, but they're indicating
But they won't put it in writing.
Very good chances, so.
Well, it's, it's cause we don't know exactly what we need.
Yeah.
That's cause the design's not done, and all this is kinda like a house of cards.
I'm talking about the state promising that
Yeah, but they need to see the project, they don't wanna guarantee they'll do it, but I was trying to screw the project, but
So Jean, to summarize, what are you suggesting we do?
I suggest we go back to, to Manaway with the one month, that way we're gonna know what those cost escalations are gonna be.
To August thirty, still, or another month?
Ju, just for the month of September.
Oh, September, up to October.
Up to October, still.
And equally, push hard on this, starting even next week, look, it's, it's time, you know, there's no miracle forthcoming.
Yeah. Yeah.
The miracle's gonna be in the hard work to reduce the cost.
Right. And you know, we're on their side, I, I think sometimes we're representatives not be, and we are, because we know they're part of Portage County, it's not to our benefit if they fail.
We shouldn't take on the worst.
Is it correct, Jean, to say that if we merge, you are going to hire employees, so the merger, the merger does not put the same strain,
He has to.
However, you're reluctant to hire someone based only on this contract, and that's our issue right now, is we don't wanna commit to a new employee
If you don't know. Right.
while we're only on a month-to-month contract, and that's why the increased costs, overtime, et cetera, come about, if they would proceed with the merge, we can proceed with our employment plan, and there are no issues regarding this.
Right, you know, Jean, maybe that needs to be stressed, maybe that is not, or Mayor Clark's not understanding that, I don't know.
While even the, the confusion over the billing, you know, we agreed, Todd pointed out, we will bill monthly, instead of making this look like this five hundred dollar bill every quarter, we will bill monthly, uh, and it keeps the payment smaller, even though
Right. Or a manor, it's like a, it's like a payment, yes.
The same amount, exactly. Exactly.
Or a manor, yeah.
That's an extra step, our rules and regulations have to be modified to include those kinds of things, I mean, there's a lot of work on our side of the table
To do that, to make it happen.
But we hate to take our time and do that, only if it's not gonna occur, so.
If it's not gonna
So Jean, just to clarify, as far as the, the rate increases, that they have passed a resolution, and they were on track to increase, what was it, fifteen percent a year?
For seven.
For seven years.
Have they ever seconded hear that already, or? I know they've done one, so, they've done two of those increases, or just one, they've done two already.
Two, two already.
So are you proposing to hold whatever they're currently paying for five years, and then
I'm not even proposing to do that, we can't follow their rate structure, it was the difference between our projected rates and theirs that gave us this pot of money, when our guarantee and our proposal to them is we would not increase their surcharge above their current rate structure, which means we started bringing a little money in as we start to do design, and then, at the end of the additional five years, we would have a pot of money to pay it down, and we said all along, whenever it's paid for, we're done surcharging, and this is actually a little different model in that we're not going to take those increases, um, out over five years, we're starting with a set amount on day one.
Okay.
Now
It's less overall, it's less in the beginning, but for a far longer period of time, we were talking ten to fifteen years before, and now the projections are forty years, is that right, the current is for forty?
Correct, I'm su, yes.
You know, I know John True is only part-time there, but he's still putting in time, will he be in the negotiations?
Yes.
Cause that, that would be a good thing, I think.
That's why he kept on, he's only gonna stay on until this is done.
So absent anything else So absent anything else, I would proceed with...
A lot of saying another month.
Communicating to, to Mayor Clark that we will do another three days with these issues and then we'll have to calculate what those issues are gonna be. And at the end of that time period, we're gonna have some handle on how much time we need to charge them, even though it's in Randolph or whatever facility, because now we need to fill their...
So, so Jean, you're saying extend it until October first?
October first, yes.
And then, but you're going to increase the rates for, because, due to like the union contracts like you did last year, since we've been doing this for over a year? And then you're also gonna add to the increase for overtime?
Exactly. Well, it's just...
And this is gonna go effective, what, September first to October? But then October first comes, what, what is our plan for...
We'll all need to make a decision.
Whether they're gonna merge.
Whether, whether they're gonna merge or not, which case we would continue. And Todd's absolutely right. We would be looking for people to start to staff that on a full-time basis. If the agreement, the ink's dry. The last thing I wanna do is hire somebody and then turn around and say, "I'm really sorry, but we don't have a job for them." That's all.
But what other options do they have? I mean, because...
Contract.
Yeah, but they said contract would be way more than what we're charging, so...
Ultimately, the answer comes to time. How long is it gonna take them to force their hand, so to speak? But that, I mean, that just stayed five, ten, fifteen years of limping along.
See, I think we need to be really firm on that date, October one.
Yeah, we, we've worked this along for over a year now and it just, we just keep talking and nothing's getting done. And you know what? I think we're to the point that October first has to be like the ultimate deadline.
That's the date.
Well, and it's not like we're leaving them high, right? The agreement is modified first time, not the original agreement, the first modification date garner and the foresight to require us to notify them twenty-one days prior to expiration of the agreement. And at which time, we will need whatever they need during that time period to operate, but equally whatever they need from us to transfer to whoever they're gonna get in our absence. But it's date certain and then it's back on them.
See, Jean, they're not gonna give anyone in our absence.
Not for...
For price.
Well, that's what they need, but they can't afford it.
Exactly. So, I mean, just like kicking the can down the road, you might as well.
Okay. Do the letter and then go sit at the negotiation table.
Regarding the hours, we don't have to commit to that right now, I don't think.
Okay.
Is that, I mean, you have a...
The hours being?
The, for the LMI study.
Oh.
Well, why wouldn't we if we're gonna, if we're gonna push it by LMI study?
I mean, what I'm hearing from you is you're willing to, but we want, we want to make sure the hours are spent wisely in terms of a merge, not just giving them to do whatever they want.
Well, no, the only, yeah, the only way we would give up our hours is if we were gonna do a merge. They're gonna do something else then. Okay, sounds good. Thanks, guys.
Thanks.
Okay, Joanne? Is it, was it just the house? If you wanna join with the...
Okay, um, I am looking for an executive session on G six security.
Okay.
Okay. I will make a motion that we go into executive session for G six for details relative to security arrangements in emergency response protocol. And I will second roll call I am.
Green?
Yes.
Okay.